I'm going to call to order this regular session of the Page County School Board.
Ms. Alder?
Yes.
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 Please pause for a minute of silence as we prepare for the meeting tonight. And for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Fox, do we have any agenda changes or additions?
No, we do not.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Alder and a second by Dr. Painter to approve the agenda.
Ms. Alder?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Dr. Painter?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Smith?
Yes. Yes.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open the budget hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to certify that everything in closed sessions dealt with personnel matters discussed in the closed meeting, Section 2.2-3711A1.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Sullivan Smoot and a second by Mrs. Alder to certify personnel matters discussed in closed session.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Dr. Painter?
Yes.
Ms. Alder?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Smith?
Yes. Yes.
Make a motion to open the budget hearing.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Sullivan Smoot and a second by Mr. Painter to open the budget hearing.
Dr. Painter?
Yes.
Ms. Alder?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Do we have any comments?
We have.
I'll make a motion to close the budget hearing.
One second.
A motion by Dr. Painter and a second by Ms. Alder to close the budget hearing.
Ms. Alder?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Dr. Painter?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution in honor of Mr. Tommy Lansbury?
So, yes, good evening. So, tonight, we want to take a moment to recognize and honor Mr. Lansbury and his memory and his commitment and work to the Page County Public School System, both as an employee and as a board member. So, at this time, Mrs. Gordon's going to come down to the front. And I'd like to ask his family to please join us. If you all would come forward and join us down here, please. We'd like for you all to be present for this as we read a resolution that we've created. So, anyone with Mr. Lansbury's family, if you'll come forward, please. And thank you all for being here tonight. So, this resolution from the Page County Public School Board celebrates the life and honors the memory of Mr. Tommy Thomas Harry Lansbury. And Mrs. Sullivan Smoot is going to read that for us this evening.
Whereas Mr. Thomas Tommy Harry Lansbury, District 1 Representative on the Page County School Board, passed away on September the 22nd, 2022. Whereas for 25 years, Mr. Lansbury served as a valuable employee to the school division, serving as a mechanic in the bus garage and as a substitute driver and mechanic. Whereas in 2018, Mr. Lansbury was elected to his first term as a Page County School Board Member and was re-elected for a second four-year term, which began in 2022. Whereas Mr. Lansbury was born in Stanley, Virginia in 1945 and was a veteran of the United States Army, having served time in Vietnam. He was also a member of the Raleighville Trinity Church, the Raleighville Rec. Center, and the Raleighville Cemetery Association. Whereas Mr. Lansbury was married to Joan Diane Triplet Lansbury, who passed away in 2015. He was the proud father of three daughters: Teresa Lynn Good and her husband Jeff of Stanley, Tammy Doyle and her husband Tom of Raleighville, and Tracy D. Tester and her husband Kevin of Stanley. Whereas Mr. Lansbury was a proud grandfather to four grandchildren: Liam, Blakeland Tester, Michael Doyle and wife Rebecca, James Doyle, and three great-grandchildren: Daniel, Carson, Blakenlynn, Doyle. Where Mr. Lansbury is also survived by his sister Doris A. Lansbury of Raleighville and preceded in death by his three brothers, Paul Howard, Aubrey Lee, and James M. Lansbury. Whereas Mr. Lansbury had a special relationship with his nephew, Captain Timothy Lansbury, and his family. Whereas School Board Chair Ms. Megan Gordon states, "We are deeply appreciative of his years of dedication, service to Page County Public Schools." Whereas School Board Vice Chair Mrs. Jackie Sullivan Smoot shared that she was grateful to have met Mr. Lansbury, and he had the best interests of all that worked in the system. His common sense approach to many situations paid off in the long run. The constituents of District 1 were well represented. Whereas District 2 School Board Member Mr. Rolf Gubler shared this about Mr. Lansbury, "With Tommy, the well-being and safety of the students always came first. One place where you saw this was his ongoing support for improving our bus fleet. He also cared about our staff, and he wanted to improve teacher retention in Page County Public Schools. He consistently supported every staff raise over the past five years. We didn't just lose a school board member, we lost a member of our Page County Public Schools family, and we lost a friend. Tommy will be sorely missed." Whereas Dr. Amy Painter, School Board Member from District 3, stated that Tommy was very welcoming when I started the board. He was always a strong advocate in his Raleighville community and the Transportation Department. Whereas District 4 School Board Member Mr. Duane Painter shared that Tommy was a family man, and I appreciated his views on school transportation and his thoughts on difficult issues that COVID raised. Whereas Superintendent Dr. Tony of Fox shared that Mr. Lansbury was a dedicated School Board Member and a fierce advocate for our students, especially when it came to the safety of our students and staff. I will always be grateful for his quiet spirit, his beaming smile, and his ongoing support. Our division has lost someone who not only cared about the students and staff in our division, he also cared for the Raleighville community and all of Page County. Whereas the entire Page County Public School System extends its deepest condolences to Mr. Lansbury's daughters and their families, and as well as Mr. Lansbury's extended family and friends who knew and loved him. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Page County School Board recognizes the life and memory of District 1 School Board Member Mr. Tommy Lansbury as a devoted advocate of students, staff, and families."
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. We're grateful that we could do this for you all, and thank you for sharing him with us. So, next, we're going to move on is Ms. Bobby Comer. If she would come to the front and join us, please. Ms. Bobby Comer and Mr. Cale, would you please come forward? And Ms. Comer, if you have any family with you, if you'd like for them to join you, you're welcome to have them join you this evening as well. So, we're very excited this evening to congratulate and recognize Mrs. Bobby Comer, Family and Consumer Science Teacher from Page County High School, on being awarded the 2023 National ACTE Teacher of the Year Award. And we want to stress national, so of everyone in the country, she is the Teacher of the Year. This honor was bestowed on Mrs. Comer at the Association for Career and Technical Education, or the ACTE, Gala this past December. The award recognizes the finest career and technical education teachers at the middle and high school level who have demonstrated innovation in the classroom, commitment to their students, and dedication to the improvement of their institutions and their communities. Mrs. Comer has taught FCS at Page High School for 35 years and currently teaches several courses in the hospitality and tourism career pathways. Her students have achieved 100% pass rates on three career and technical education credential tests. She's helped develop a culinary internship with a major hospitality and food management company, pairing chefs with culinary students, leading to employment in their restaurants. This fall, Mrs. Comer and her students were chosen as a part of a 15-member team to participate in a hospitality industry immersion experience in Chicago, attending the National Restaurant Association's show. She has served on four Virginia State Curriculum Writing Committees and was a participant in the Virginia Department of Education's focus group to develop recommendations for submission to the governor for the CTE endorsement of high school diplomas. Mrs. Comer was honored to be selected to serve as a member of the Perkins Five Core Stakeholder Team for the Office of CTE with the Virginia Department of Education. Mrs. Comer, you're an asset to our division. Your reach and your influence extends to thousands of students, and your impact is felt daily. We're so very, very proud of you and grateful for the hard work that you do each day in service of our students, our schools, our division, and our community. And to honor your national award, we're excited tonight to present you with a banner that you can hang in your classroom. So, congratulations, Mrs. Comer. Yeah, you guys can sort out where you want to hang it. Yes, please. You have one more, Mrs. Gordon. Yeah. We're making you work tonight. All right. And so, our next item on our agenda is our student recognition. So, we are excited again tonight to be able to have an opportunity not only to celebrate the memory of Mr. Lansbury and honor Mrs. Comer's achievements, but we also want to celebrate our students and their achievements. So, your participation, students, in extracurricular activities has been shown to increase not only your academic achievement, but lead to improved attendance and provide a boost in not only your mental health, but also your physical well-being. We're excited to recognize students, coaches, and advisors for state or national-level activities. So, tonight, those students who earned awards last spring or summer, but who were unable to attend our recognition ceremony in the fall will be honored tonight, as well as those who earned awards this past fall for activities that they participated in. So, students, advisors, and coaches, as your name is called, if you would please come forward and receive your certificate from School Board Chair Mrs. Gordon and Mrs. Sullivan Smoot, if you'd like to join her too, please. Thank you. If you would, with each group, we're going to announce like a sports team or an FCCLA group. If you'd stay down in the front, we'll take a picture and then we'll release that group. And if you all would, just to expedite it, if you'll hold your applause until we have all of the students for that particular group in the front. So, Mrs. Ryman is going to start us off this evening.
Yes, it's my pleasure to begin tonight with the Page County High School Family, Career, and Community Association, or FCCLA, winners. And we have quite a few, which is wonderful. Congratulations to the following students: Maron Cave, Virginia State Fair FCCLA Accessories Trophy winner; Manuel Corono Cardosa, FCCLA Second Place National Star Events Chapter Service Project, as well as Life Smart's Knowledgeable National Qualifier; Kaylee Kite, FCCLA Life Smart's Knowledgeable National Qualifier and National Star Events Silver Medal for Promote and Publicize; Seth McCoy, FCCLA First Place in the Nation Hospitality and Tourism Challenge Test, as well as National Star Events Silver Medal for Event Management; Joey Miller, FCCLA Virginia Vice President of Parliamentary Law for this year, as well as Life Smart's Knowledgeable National Qualifier and State Vice President of Membership for the year 2021-22; Whitney Minor, FCCLA First Place in the Nation Knowledge Challenge Test, National Star Events Silver Medal for Event Management, Virginia State Fair and FCCLA Wear Trophy Winner; Jackson Morris, FCCLA Life Smart's Knowledgeable National Qualifier; Maddie Murphy, FCCLA National Star Events Silver Medal Event Management; Sadie Rodriguez, FCCLA Second Place National Star Events Chapter Service Project, as well as Life Smart's Knowledgeable National Qualifier. And last but not least, Hannah Thomas, FCCLA National Fall Conference Second Place Speak Out for FCCLA and State Star Events First Place for Promote and Publicize. Let's give them a big round of applause.
And you guys can actually stay there for just a second. Mrs. Comer, would you come and join them as well, please? So, we certainly want to acknowledge two awards to the Page County High School FCCLA chapter. They were the National Families First Winner and the National Career Connections Runner-Up. So, congratulations, Mrs. Comer, and all of you from Page County High School FCCLA. All right. Did we get all the pictures that we want? Great. Thank you, guys, very much. Congratulations. We would now like to recognize students and sponsors from the Future Farmers of America or the FFA organizations at both of our high schools. So, Jessie Lang from Luray High School, if you would come forward. He is the FFA State Winner for Small Engines Troubleshooting and Repair. Congratulations. And Ms. Katie Reins, if you would come forward. She's a sponsor from Luray High School, and their chapter also received the National Chapter Bronze Ranking Award. And Mr. Matthews, Ken Matthews from Page High School, the Virginia's Farm Bureau Hay-Bale Decorating Contest winner for the Community Spirit category. So, congratulations to both of our FFA chapters. Great job to all of you. Thank you all. Also from Page County High School tonight, we would like to congratulate Jade Mullins for being named to the All-State Cheerleading Second Team. Is Jade here? Is Coach Tanya May, is she here? We want to congratulate her. So, maybe Mr. Cale will get you those certificates. But congratulations to both Jade and her coach, Ms. May.
Sorry. From Luray High School, we would like to recognize the following students who participated in a state outdoor track meet last spring: James Pharaoh; Davy Johnson; Coach Alyssa Sowers; and Coach David Sowers. Congratulations. Thank you, guys. Also from Luray High School, congratulations to the following Family, Career, and Community Association, or FCCLA, winners: Georgia Diaz, National Fall Conference Bronze Medal Hospitality, Tourism, and Recreation Online Event; Virginia Grab, National Fall Conference Silver Medal Science FCS Challenge; Jaden Montcom Harris, National Fall Conference Silver Medal Culinary Math Challenge; Gracie Olson, National Fall Conference Bronze Medal Early Childhood Challenge; Devon Rothgab, National Fall Conference Silver Medal Hospitality, Tourism, and Recreation Online Event; April Smith, FCCLA Advisor, National Fall Conference. Congratulations.
We would like to congratulate the players and coaches from the Page County High School Girls Softball Team who earned the title of State Runner-Up. These students were not able to be here in the fall. Bailey Comer; Alexis Flymeyer; Adrian Martin; Jade Mullins; Cadence Reinhardt; Ariana Rutterbush; Savannah Shiflett; Head Coach Alan Knight; Assistant Coach Jamie Hensley; Assistant Coach Chad Umberger; Statistician Dennis Zimmerman. We'll give them a round of applause anyway. From Luray High School, congratulations to the following students and coaches who participated in the state soccer semifinals last spring: Bailey Ansell; Summer Forder; Trinity Hassy; Hazel Parlet; Olivia Skalzy; Kate Taglau; Aubrey Wilson; and Coach Amy Weekly. Congratulations.
From Page County High School, we'd like to recognize the following students who participated in the state outdoor track meet last spring: Kane and Breeden; Brett Paul Campbell; Stefan Hawkins; Logan Heistin; and their coaches, Coach Chris Hall, Kevin Morris, Kaylee Yankee, and Sammy Yankee. There, we got one. And from Page County Middle School, congratulations to the following Family, Career, and Community Association FCCLA winners: So, Atari Good for the National Fall Conference Speak Out for FCCLA participant; McKenna Parlet, a gold medal and third place in the nation for Focus on Children's Star Event; Rebecca Seals, gold medal Repurpose and Redesign Star Event; Bella Shiflett, National Fall Conference FCCLA Knowledge Challenge participant; Randall Walgemot, National Fall Conference First Place Child Care Challenge; Veronica Yoro for gold medal and third place in the nation Focus on Children's Star Event, as well as a National Fall Conference First Place in the Nutrition Challenge. And congratulations to Ms. Jenny Miller, their advisor.
All right. And from Luray High School, congratulations to the following students who participated in the volleyball state quarterfinals: Bailey Ansell; Lindsay Bly; Claudia Cave; Cadence Cave; Gracie Embry; Reese Bitten.
Reese Bitten. Summer Porter. Avery Jewell. Nala Lawson. Jaden McFung. Hazel Parlet. Kate Taglau. And Head Coach Susan Henry Wilson. Congratulations. I think I walked away too fast, sorry. Also, congratulations to Jaden McFung, who was named the All-State First Team for volleyball. So let's go another round of applause.
And just one other addition to that, we want to acknowledge assistant coach of the volleyball team, Charity McClung. I don't know if she's here or not.
Charity.
Charity, excuse me, sorry. Charity McClung. Apologies.
Charity, you need to walk up front, too.
Yeah, we have a certificate for you.
She's gonna do it.
Okay. You gave it to Jaden. Charity, I'm sorry. We just wanted to see you and thank you. All right. And now we want to congratulate the following students who participated in the state cross-country meet this fall. From Page County High School, Logan Heistin. Aaron Hensley. Summer Kite. And Coaches Brandon Brumfield and Nicole Brumfield. You guys stay put. And state cross-country participants from Luray High School, we have Carolina Wood, who finished 18th in the state. And girls coach Monica Janney. Davy Johnson, who placed second in the state. And Eli Jones. And Coach of the boys' team is Steve Prince. We also want to congratulate Davy Johnson from Luray High for being named to the cross-country All-State Team. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you, guys. So while they're returning to their seats, we just want to thank all of you, parents, coaches, friends, family, who support our students in these wonderful activities. And to all of our coaches and sponsors, our teachers who give extra time, your efforts do not go unrecognized and we appreciate everything you do. Please join us as we can continue to congratulate these students. Know that this ends our recognition portion. You're welcome to stay for the remainder of our agenda, but we suspect that you don't want to, so you're welcome to leave if you want to. But thank you all and congratulations.
Yes.
Okay, guys, I don't take it too offensively.
I just want to make a motion for a five-minute break.
Half of these are like, hey, dude. They're like, where is he?
I make a motion that we do a five-minute recess.
We have a motion for a five-minute recess. Leave a second. We're good.
The state javelin going? Didn't you feel that looked unconscioned?
They say javelin was coming back.
Betty, I'm like number one in the state of jazz. So sorry. Unofficially. Have a fan.
You're the national champion of everything.
Mrs. Sullivan, smooth.
Unofficially, yes.
And I feel so bad because I'm delayed. You are, but I feel so bad. And I felt late. And I feel bad.
Wait, I cleared the room.
How's track then?
Painful, excruciating. What are you doing? Whatever they tell you to.
What? What they tell it to.
That's a good answer.
If you said track, which is.
It still is pretty easy, but I do say it's not easy to be good, but it's easy if you don't try. Listen, the only thing I actually pride at, I got two questions away from state, okay? Two, because I got beat by a platoon.
It may have ended by now.
Yeah, well.
Then I got beat by a tall, like, white dude.
And, and, and. Hopefully she liked my presentation.
She said good job. You always give them a presentation.
A lot of pictures, so this is.
Good.
Citizen comment? We don't have? No citizen comment? The January minutes are posted for review. Can I have approval for consent agenda?
I make a motion for the consent agenda to be approved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Painter, second by Mr. Painter, to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Student board member update. Do you all have any updates for us? Summer, do you have a presentation?
Yes, ma'am. Behind you.
All right.
All right, so here's just a quick update of what's going on at Luray High School. So our student focus groups, our students' focus groups have been selected, and the groups are expected to start meeting next Tuesday. We have some special things going on in our SCA. So our student council is currently working on a plan to beautify the walls of Luray High School. So as you can see right here, we have two beautiful murals that are on our walls. But as an association, as a student body, we have come up with a plan to maybe hang some things or hang some decorations or a mural up in the main hallway. We have on the agenda to create A, B, C wing wall signs that hang above each wing. We are trying to coordinate with the art program and, of course, our administration to see about adding a mural to the main hallway. And we have some thought processes of incorporating school-themed designs around our school, such as like a bulldog or just kind of school spirit things. To start this process, we have a fundraiser. So we are having a movie night. The date is tentative, but it's sometime next month in March, and it will be here at LHS. March 3rd.
Soon, it's next week.
Mm-hmm. That's awesome. Here are just some small student body updates. We have spring sports have started practicing. Our front sixteen is preparing for their super rich competition this Saturday at LHS. Prom preparation is in full swing. And recently, our FFA hosted the Skyline Federation Small Engine and Tractor Troubleshooting Contest. Both teams place first and will advance to the regional competition in March. And then our next slide is just a couple of pictures to show kind of the atmosphere at Luray High School. So we have students working. We have our basketball team. Our season recently ended Tuesday. We have our indoor track team, and we have pictures from our recent assembly that shows the great spirit we have here at LHS. And that's all I have for you guys.
Good job.
Thank you.
So we don't have a formal presentation for play planning, but we just wanted to give some updates on what's going on. So this upcoming Monday, our National Honor Society chapter is hosting a blood drive. It'll go from early morning into lunchtime. And we had the Addams Family musical, and that went pretty well. It was a success, I would say. And we have an FBLA regional conference this Saturday that Jackson and I and a few other members will be attending.
Okay, so I would like to first congratulate our girls' basketball team for their win last night. Now, I've been to Scarborough. Don't kill me. Second off, Florida covered a lot of stuff, but on March 11th, we're traveling to Fort Defiant, our history bowl team, to hopefully qualify for Nationals again. And FBLA or FCCLA State Conference is happening in April. So people who haven't already qualified are going to go to try to qualify for Denver. And get that all I have.
Thank you. There's a lot going on. Good job. Ms. Ryman, your instructional update? All right.
Your wife didn't say to take your picture?
No, she's seen me nothing. Good evening, board members. Dr. Fox, tonight we bring to you the Middle School Program of Studies informational item so that we can go through that process and get it approved to start the middle school scheduling. Our timeline was in January. Middle School Administration and counselors reviewed the current program for any additional edits prior to prescribing the finalized draft this evening. January, February, teachers provided input on the descriptions for the honors courses. So those are new. We added a description for different honors courses. February, Middle School administrators reviewed the 2023-24 draft to be presented this evening. And then in March, it's our desire to have the middle school program approved so that we can go forth with the scheduling process. Any questions?
Do we have this?
It hasn't been attached to that board item. So the PDF of the draft should be coming very shortly for you to review before.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Fox, superintendent's update?
Yep, thank you. This evening, I want to begin. This month is School Board Appreciation Month. In last meeting, we celebrated our clerk and our deputy clerk. Well, tonight, we want to celebrate you all. And then on the table, when you guys came back from photo session, were a couple of treats and gifts. And I believe the brownies are from the FFA, FCCLA at Luray High School. So thank you to Ms. Smith and her team for those. And the little gift is just a token from the division to say thank you for the work that you do. You all are responsible for the oversight and success and the effectiveness of our division. You ensure that our students have access to high-quality instruction and education, and you impact the present and the future lives of our children and set direction to prepare students for to be contributing students or citizens, excuse me. So we just want to say thank you on behalf of all of our staff and employees in the division. We want to say thank you, and we appreciate the work that you do. We know it's sometimes tireless, sometimes hard, but we want you to know how much we appreciate what you do and the spirit with which you all do it. So congratulations and thank you all for the work that you do. Just a quick COVID update. We're actually across the state looking pretty good. You can see this slide in comparison to where we were two weeks ago. We're in the low range in terms of the number of cases that we have across the division. We currently have 10 active cases, and that's up a little bit from six where we were in early February. And again, we're seeing a lot of other things like stomach bugs circulating. So we just encourage everyone to continue using those mitigation strategies as they help reduce the spread of cold illnesses. We are very excited tonight to announce and to share with you all that we are one of 14 school divisions across the state to have been awarded a Communities and Schools grant. And this grant, in a total of $449,655, is going to be spent towards decreasing chronic absenteeism across the Division K to 12. The grant runs from February of 2023 through June of 2024. So it's a lot of money to spend in a very short period of time. And we are working with community partners, primarily PACA. This grant required you to have a community partner, so PACA is our partner for that. But it's going to provide for students and families. It's going to give them access to additional supports as well as provide teachers and staff with training and resources. And so what we've provided for you is just a short snippet of some of the resources that the grant will provide. One of the requirements of the grant is you had to have someone at the division level who serves as a community and family engagement coordinator. We wrote into the grant that we would have a community coordinator at each school, and that will be a stipend position. We're going to talk more with our principals about all of this next week at our meeting. There are stipends there to cover after-school activities for teachers who sponsor clubs or activities or provide mentoring and tutoring. We'll provide transportation, students for services for students and for parents. One of the things that we can do is if a family is in need of counseling services and they don't have transportation, this grant can cover the costs of transportation. We're going to be providing some parent-student classes. We actually are running our first class next week on drug interventions, where a student and a parent come together. We're going to have clothing and hygiene closets at each of our schools, a food pantry at each school. We're looking at some career exploration software where students can go and take a look at different careers and see what they might be interested in. Counseling services for addiction and for family growth, professional development in support of mental health awareness, and calming corner mental health self-care materials and supplies at each of our schools for student use. So we're very excited that. We'll continue to keep you guys updated on that grant, but we are definitely excited to be able to have these resources for the division. And in terms of budget, I don't have a whole lot of news to report tonight. So there's one slide that just simply says, "I don't have a lot of new news to report to you." And that's unfortunate. I make light of it, but it is unfortunate because the session does end on Saturday, and we are hearing rumblings of it. They're needing to be called a special session. So that is going to potentially delay our budget process again this year as it did last year. So as we will present something to you on March 9th, we're going to use the governor's proposed budget, and we will present to you a preliminary budget on March 9th. But we will have to recognize that there will likely be some substantial changes to that as we get information from the General Assembly and the Department of Education. So that's my update for you all this evening. Any questions I can answer for you all?
I don't have a question. It's just a comment that I appreciate that Paige always applies for these grants because they just don't mail you a little mailing like Publishers Clearinghouse. It means somebody had to take on extra assignment to write a narrative and needs assessment behind it, and that we apply for these because we're just not handed this money out of the sky that somebody took the time to do it. So I appreciate that.
I've told you all this many times, but I'm very fortunate to have a wonderful team that works hard every day. So we're excited about this one in particular.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Ms. Seacrest, approval of claims for payment?
Yes, good evening, board members. You have been provided with the claim certification, where the operating fund expenditures are $247,278.07. Food service expenditures, $24,179.66. For total expenditures of $271,447.73. Along with that, you've been provided with the list of claims as well as a check register. And if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Make a motion that we approve the claims for payment as presented by Mrs. Seacrest?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Painter and a second by Dr. Painter to approve the claims for payment as presented?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Ms. Seacrest?
Purchase orders over $10,000? Sorry. Yes, we have two purchase orders over $10,000 for your approval this evening. They are both from our food service department. The first one is for a convection oven, and the second one is for a vendor for produce and grains. Ms. Jeffrey's is here as well. If you have any questions, we'll do our best to answer those for you.
I make a motion we approve the purchase orders over $10,000.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Alger and a second by Mr. Painter to approve the purchase orders over $10,000?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Ryman, overnight field trips?
Yes, I have quite a few for you this evening. It's a good thing. It means our kids are moving and grooving at various events. So one of these is a past event that happened recently before between meetings we had. So the Page County High wrestling team was February 16th to 18th for their regional wrestling. That was approximately four students. Coming up on March 1st, we have Luray High indoor track going away for a night. First is state indoor track meet. That could be approximately 14 students. March 17th to 18th, we have about 10 to 12 kids from Luray High who will be attending the annual convention for Student Council Association. Again, in April, looking forward to April 13th to 16th, about 10 kids from Luray High attending the FCCLA State Leadership Conference. And lastly, April 16th to 18th, again, about 10 students from Luray High who will be on the debate team. Who will be attending the Model General Assembly program.
Make a motion that we approve overnight field trips as presented by Mrs. Ryman.
Second. A motion by Mr. Painter and a second by Mrs. Sullivan Smoot to approve the overnight field trips as presented?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Board members.
Man, this is a fast meeting for all of this going on.
I do have something to say.
Well, back when we were talking about masks and transgender and all this stuff, we had all kinds of fans and communication and everybody telling us this and that. And now it's crickets, which I really, really, really like. But my point is, is that it is School Board Appreciation Month. And if you read the news or listen around even across the hump, school boards aren't getting along. But what I will say is I appreciate everybody on our board, that we all get along. We tease each other and pick, but we all support each other. And we're all friends and not saying ugly stuff to each other. So I appreciate all of you, even though we never get told outside of this group. But I appreciate you all, and I appreciate everybody that makes our job easier by making sure that we get all this info and all that. So happy School Board Appreciation Month. And kids, I know y'all would rather be home on like your only night off, but thank you for representing your schools as well.
I would encourage our students to continue with presenting stuff to us and letting us know what's going on. And I'd love to be able to hear more and more as you talk to more and more students about how from the student perspective, because that's one thing that we're really isolated from. We hear from parents, and we read social media, and we hear from folks inside the system. But hearing from the children, the students, is important as well. So hopefully you guys will bring some stuff for us in that regard as well. But thank you for your presentations today.
I want to say I'm happy FFA week to our FFA leaders and FFA students. Obviously, it's a big passion of mine. And yeah, it's needed. I actually saw some data that I shared last year that we had lost 800 farms just in the year of 2021, just in Virginia. And obviously, we need farmers to have food. And so I think it's great to see the youth here tonight that were really interested and involved, and hope that continues and can continue to grow. It's needed, especially in our community, so.
Since you say that, I'm trading in the school board after this year for goats. I would have registered Nigerian dwarf goats that are dairy goats. There you go.
For real?
For real.
Okay, for real.
Goat yoga?
Goat yoga. Therapy goats, I got you.
Dr. Painter, we're going to miss you next year.
Maybe I'll show up over there for my three minutes.
There you go.
I didn't hear that she was leaving.
Well, you know how she jokes and cares. Hopefully. I just want to say, I'm getting used to saying this a lot because I am the oldest one here, and it's just a number. But it's been a pleasure to work with each and every one of you. And I'm really proud of our students and, you know, how they've come on board. And I know they probably have, haven't, have not been as involved if we were able to do this a year or so ago, but they're here, and they've given their time. And just seeing those who showed up tonight and the accomplishments that they have been able to do because of their teacher, their coach, their advisor, their family. Everybody plays a part. And that is really something that we have a lot to be proud of. And we are proud. And we don't take any of you all and your positions for granted because it takes everybody. And again, I have really enjoyed, and I hope it will continue. And Dr. Fox, we certainly appreciate you and all that you've brought to the table in your first two years. And we plug on. And I can tell you, I get frustrated with Richmond because they really don't know what goes on in a schoolhouse. I wish they talked to more people in the schoolhouse and find out exactly what is. I don't know if it would help things, but it might make us feel a little bit better and connected. But anyway, just know we do this because we really do have an interest and we care. And again, all of you make it possible. It's not just one or two. It takes the whole group. So thank you for all that you do every day.
Yes, thank you all. I thought tonight was fun because we got to celebrate so many cool achievements and so many people. And thank you, Dr. Painter, for saying what you said because it has been, it has been fun. I mean, this is a, you know, we don't always agree, but you don't have to agree. We can disagree and still be civil. And it's been a fun board, knock on wood. I don't want to see anybody turning over in November. But anyway, thank you for making it, you know, the way it's been the last year. And thank you, guys, at the end of the table, all of you kids that are here, talking to us, leading everybody else in your schools. We do definitely want to keep hearing all about the good things that you're doing because with so much negative out there all the time, it was just, it's nice to have nights like these when we get to celebrate.
I make a motion that we turn.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Painter and a second by Mr. Painter.
It's out. Look at you. Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.